Call.
Arciana Olliar.
Here.
Mr. Ramon.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Kyle Niederman.
Here.
Eric Coran.
Here. Next up, we have a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any need for an executive session? Call to the public. Do we have any call to the public? Spotslights and recognition. Carol Nocowski said she did not have anything for us tonight, so we will just go ahead and move forward to the consent agenda.
I move that we approve item number four as presented.
I'll second.
Arciana Olliar.
Yes.
Mr. Ramon.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kyle Niederman.
Yes.
Eric Coran.
Yes. We have no discussion items, so we'll go right to the action items. 6.1 Superintendent, second presentation, review of change to policy GCH.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This policy is GCH Professional Support Staff Orientation and Training. The only changes to this policy are the statutory reference to ARS 15-717.02 is replaced by a reference to ARS 41-1494. And the last paragraph of the policy is removed as the statutory language upon which it is based has been ruled unconstitutional, so there's no longer a $5,000 penalty to schools. There were no changes to this from the first reading.
Any discussion or motion?
I'll move to approve 6.1.
I'll second that.
Mr. Ramon.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kyle Niederman.
Yes.
Arciana Olliar.
Yes.
Eric Coran.
Yes. Moving to 6.2, second presentation, review of ASBA Policy Services advisories.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This is a much longer list of policies that we're talking about tonight, and this is the second presentation of all of them. Each of our directors will present their respective policies, and I will start with the first three. The first is family life education or instruction in sex education. As we discussed during the special session, Lake Havasah Unified School District does not teach sex education. We simply teach hygiene at the fifth grade level. This is not replacing that or changing that in any way. It is simply a policy that if the school district board wanted to adopt a sex education curriculum in the future, this is the policy you would have to go through to include parents, to include community members. And the other piece that they have now added to that is that we shall not refer students to or use any sexually explicit material in any manner except as provided in a governing board-approved sex education program, which I will repeat, we do not have. And materials may be exempted from this requirement if the materials meet the definition of ARS 15-120.02B listed in the regulation. So again, just to repeat, there are no changes to this from the first time. We do not have a sex education curriculum. We only teach hygiene at the fifth grade level. This is not in any way intended to change that. It is simply if a board ever in the future wanted to adopt that curriculum, they would need to go through this process. And there are a whole bunch of these, so you can discuss them each one as we go, if you'd like.
Yeah, I would just want to say right here, just to mention to the community, you know, like Dr. Stone said, we are not adopting sex ed curriculum, but putting into place the vehicle to involve the community in any type of process that would do it. As you've known from this board and the past board, we think we have a pretty good record on involving the community in curriculum, starting with the core curriculum that we've adopted and moving on last year to the English and the math curriculum in involving the community. And we would continue that forward as we're doing also with the science and the social studies curriculum. Any curriculum would highly involve community input.
And just one further note on that. So one of the reasons that we do not currently offer sex education at any of the higher grades or the lower grades, we don't offer any sex education at any of the grades. And one of the reasons for that is we've been keeping tabs and working closely with the Mojave County Department of Public Health and just keeping a watch on things like teen pregnancy rates and teen sexually transmitted infection rates. Those rates have not climbed. They've actually been very low and very stably low for some time now. And so we feel like children are getting the education that they need via their families or some other source, and so we haven't felt the need as a school district to provide explicit instruction in that area.
Okay, I will go on to the second policy, which is parental involvement in education. There have been no changes to this policy since the first reading, and this is simply that parents' rights. We do recognize that those rights are codified in the Parental Bill of Rights. And the big piece here is that we have procedures by which parents can access the school's library collection of available books and materials and ways that parents can receive a list of books and materials borrowed from the library by their children. I just want to note here, we are exempt from that requirement, but because we do have an electronic system, we would certainly work with their parents if they needed that information for any reason. The only other piece in this is that the right to access all written and electronic records of a school district or school district employees concerning the parent's child pursuant to Section 15143 is listed in the regulation, and we would be able to provide that to any parent who requests it as well.
Just for a quick informational, the reason why we are exempt is...
You are exempt if you do not have a full-time librarian in any capacity in any of your schools. We do not have that, but we do have the follow-up electronic system that would allow us to provide parents with that information.
So I'm just making sure that this is something we are going above and beyond because we do not have to because we don't have a librarian. Our resources are going to other positions, but we still do have that capability to meet those needs as if we had a librarian. So I just wanted to point that out.
The next policy, KI, is visitors to schools, and there have been no changes to this policy since the first reading. And this is just to make sure that we have procedures in place that allow visits and tours and observations of all our classrooms by parents of enrolled students or parents who wish to enroll their children and that at no time would we require a mask or face covering anywhere on the district premises except where there was a longstanding workplace safety and infection control measure in place. Okay, and I will pass it on to Mrs. Vestadego.
The first policy that I have is about the basic instructional program. There is an addition of an observance day for September 11th. This is our second year now that we've observed Standard Day O'Connor Civics Education Day, which will happen this upcoming Friday or next Monday. And starting next year, we will also have September 11th observed as 9/11 Education Day. As a side note before we move on, September 17th is a federal holiday that we must observe. These are mandated by the state, and that is Constitution Day. And so I've spoken with a number of the principals that next year we'd like to work more closely. This week is being celebrated as Constitution Week, and I've reached out to the organizers that we would like to connect with them and have this done in an integrated way that these aren't separate weird days that we're celebrating September, supporting the Constitution. The next is IJL, Library Material Selection and Adoption. And again, because of, we don't have a librarian, the piece about the public review period, we do not fall under. However, we will share all of the materials with families on request through our electronic system. The next policy is Parental Access to Library Books, IJNC. And again, there's not a full-time librarian, so we are not following this, but we will follow it in policy or procedure.
So just making sure, we're exempt from the policy of having to do it, but we are still going to do it?
Correct.
Okay.
And this governs materials that are purchased by the library. Does it also govern materials that are donated to the library?
So everything that becomes part of our collection will be shared, yes. The next policy is IKF, dealing with graduation requirements. This deals with ensuring that students have competency on the civics test, which is related to the naturalization test. Previously, it has been required for students to answer 60% and starting, let's see, with the class of 2025, or sorry, 2026, they will move that up to 70% in order to pass. Students are able to take that test starting in the seventh and eighth grade when students also participate in specifically civic education, not necessarily history education. But we have traditionally done it in grade 12. It's just easier to collect that data. And then we will now be reporting that data back to the state to look at our passage rates. The next policy is IMB, Teaching About Controversial and Sensitive Issues. There is a language change. The teacher holds a position of authority and respect in the classroom and community, and by virtue of that position, has great responsibility in the formation of education of all students. So that is a change in vocabulary. IMD, there was a change, School Ceremonies and Observances. There is a change about the moment of silence for K-12 programs. Each school district shall set aside at least one minute, but not more than two at the beginning of each day for students to engage in a moment of silence where students may not interfere with other students' participation. A teacher or school play may not suggest the nature of the reflection which students may engage in. The teacher of the class shall encourage parents in the class to discuss with their children how to use the moment of silence. The next policy is related to student surveys. The change in legislation. No survey that solicits personal information about a pupil in any of listed categories in ARS 15117A shall be conducted without first being approved and authorized by the superintendent. A teacher or other school employee may not administer any survey without obtaining written authorization from the superintendent, and the categories are listed. Our policy above that had previously, we will not administer surveys except for what is allowed in subsection D, and those are related to class surveys that are within the school, things that are going directly to college. So we've already limited the rule of giving surveys. That much of this has already been done in Lake Havasah Unified School District. Any questions?
The next policy relates to staff health and safety. This one prohibits the district from requiring a COVID-19 vaccination, and it also states that the district will not require any face mask or face covering related to COVID-19 or anywhere except for longstanding workplace safety. So for example, someone welding could be asked to wear proper safety equipment, but outside of that, we would not require it. The next policy, JF, is on student admissions. This one allows the county superintendent to grant permission for students who, for distance or whatever that may be, to enroll in a school district such as ours. So it says distance, lack of adequate transportation, or apparent or guardian's employment status could go through the county superintendent to apply for admission, and we would grant that. JICFA relates to hazing. It takes out a little bit of the terminology and directly references statute. JJIA relates to intramural sports. It clarifies that students that are females, women, or girls can participate in girls' sports, men's sports, or co-ed teams, but boys are limited to male teams or co-ed teams. JJIB is very, very similar and has the same intent and changes. JLCB, very similar, limits the district and the requirements for school attendance. So it says immunization is not required for school attendance, and it adds in the COVID-19 piece that we cannot require that. JLCC comes back to the mask policy. It says that the district or charter school, excuse me, may not require that a mask or face covering be worn by a person under, excuse me, may require with the express consent or, excuse me, consent of a person's parent or guardian. We don't intend on requiring this, but we would have the parent consent. And then it also clears up the LICE policy a little bit, just to allow nurses to allow students back after treatment. JLDA relates to school counselors and psychologists. This clarifies that a counselor psychologist would be required to have the Department of Education license and certification, but not a license or certification from, for example, the Board of Psychologists for the state of Arizona. They would just need the Department of Education one. And I think that's it. Any questions? Thank you.
DIA Accounting System. It provides an outline of required action for districts to assume full accounting responsibility independent of a county school superintendent's office or the county itself. Currently, districts who are attached to the county, the county assumes responsibility of processing warrants and checks for the school district as well as providing reconciliation documentation to help districts and the county reconcile to ensure that all revenues received are being verified by two different entities. So if you utilize DIA in separation of the county, this policy describes the process to do so, giving timelines, but there have not been any changes since the first read. Policy EE, Transportation Services, again, provides some additional language, clarifying language on what an allowable vehicle is in transporting students, including contracting with transportation companies. It does specify that vehicles must be designed to carry at least 11, but not more than 15 passengers, or to be designed as a type A or type B school bus, which type A or type B school bus is the design of the bus, typically being a cutaway version of a van, maybe have a van front end, but it's designed to, it looks like a school bus from that point back. This just provides clarifying language as to what is needed, what type of vehicle can be used in transporting students. And again, there was no changes since the first read. And then Policy EEAEA, again, more along the lines of transportation clarification. This is specific to bus driver requirements. So in this case, again, clarifying language as to licensing and endorsement requirements for bus drivers. And again, no policy changes or no changes since the first read.
Just, so a bus, anyone who transports students has to have a bus driver certification regardless of the size of the vehicle they're driving? Is that, do I have that part of it right?
So not regardless of the type of, so we do have staff who transport students on occasion in our white fleet vehicles, and a bus driver endorsement is not required for that.
Okay, it kind of sounds like from the language that it is. Maybe I'm reading it incorrectly.
I think where it says the appropriate license class for the size of the vehicle, so for driving our white fleet vehicles, it's a regular license.
Correct. It doesn't require a commercial license endorsement.
Maybe it's because it has the comma and then and, and that's why I'm getting tripped up. But I'll take your word for it, that your interpretation is correct.
Any other discussion or motion?
I move we accept it all as presented.
I'll second.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kyle Niederman.
Yes.
Arciana Olliar.
Yes.
Mr. Ramon.
Yes.
You forgot somebody.
Eric Coran.
Yes. That's okay. It's my shirt was blending in with the wall, I know. Next up, Business Services, purchase of white fleet and tech vehicles.
Mr. President, members of the board, in order to maximize the operation and efficiency of aging and our high-mileage vehicles, the purchasing and rotation of vehicles to provide reliable transportation is necessary. The purchase of three vehicles, two white fleet travel and one utility van for the technology department from Sanderson Ford is recommended at a cost not to exceed $125,000. Upon delivery of the new vehicles, fleet rotations will occur, and any remaining vehicles will be sent to auction. Sanderson Ford State Contract CTR 059316 will be used to purchase the vehicles. Quotes are included in this action item for review by the governing board, but summarized below. You can see that summary there with the two Ford edges and the one Ford Transit van for transportation. Pricing includes all requested options, preparations, service, and parts, plus tax and delivery, although the quotes total $116,345.45, and not to exceed approval amount of $125,000 is being requested to cover incidentals. Bond and our other approved funds for capital purchases will be used, and this item has been reviewed by purchasing.
I move to...
Go ahead.
Sorry. I move to approve 6.3.
I just wanted to kind of ask, I know I asked Dr. Stone, was the vehicles that we're rotating out, how old are they?
So the mileage is what we're most concerned of right now. Out of the eight travel vehicles that we have, four of them are in excess of 100,000 miles. One is just over 90,000 miles, and three are approximately 15,000 miles. Thus stated in the action item, the need to have a plan to rotate vehicles, so we're not purchasing eight vehicles all at the same time because they're all high mileage. We're trying to get to a point where we can purchase in smaller increments rather than in huge purchases, and that just increases our, I think, flexibility and dependability of our fleet.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I move that we have, we, or I'll second it.
Kyle Niederman.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Mr. Ramon.
Yes.
Arciana Olliar.
Yes.
Eric Coran.
Yes. Moving on, 6.4, Business Services, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Mr. President, members of the board, approval of vouchers for June of 2022. It also includes the encumbrance period of July and August where we are awaiting invoices to be paid still in the fiscal year. That's why the delay every year. We push June out several months while we wrap up the financials for that particular fiscal year. So you can see that dollar amount for the fiscal year end. And then August of 2022, Student Activity Funds and Auxiliary Funds for auxiliary, or for August of 2022.
Discussion or motion? I'll make a motion to approve 6.4 as presented.
I'll second that.
Arciana Olliar.
Yes.
Mr. Ramon.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kyle Niederman.
Yes.
Eric Coran.
Yes. Moving on to informational items, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to thank all our teachers and all our staff. It's been a great start to the year. I know this is the time when everybody is pretty exhausted, but it's from doing great things with kids, and I just appreciate all that they're doing. Today, I was honored to watch Mr. Becker and Mrs. Sotner present to the rural education leaders community, and they presented about culture in their schools and the things that they're doing to support their kids and support their families. It was impressive. And the other leaders that were on that call, and there were quite a few of them, they come from different states, but all in rural schools, and they were excited to hear some of the ideas and be able to share those in their own schools as well. The other thing I wanted to share is we're excited to continue working with the Rachel's Challenge Organization to host Chain Reaction for our sophomore students. The Chain Reaction Program successfully addresses the issues of violence, harassment, suicide, peer pressure, alcohol, and drugs. We are looking for community volunteers to support our students as adult facilitators. So that's on one or more of the days of the event, and that's held in the last week of October. So if anybody is interested in signing up, they can reach out to the district office or to the high school.
Student Achievement.
So we are in the beginning stages for curriculum adoption for this year, and there will be four public meetings. The dates of stakeholder meetings for social studies, the first one is November 9th, 2022, not 2000, that was a long time ago. And that is from 5:00 to 7:30 at the library. And then the second social studies meeting is January 23rd, 2023. And then our first stakeholders' meeting for science is November 17th, 2022, 5:00 to 7:30 in the library. And our second public meeting and stakeholders' meeting for science is January 18th, 2023, from 5:00 to 7:30. The curriculum will be on a public display for 60 days, starting December 8th. The stakeholder groups are made up of students, families, community members, educators, post-secondary, both someone from MCC and someone from ASU. And so we'll be looking at updating our history and science curriculum for high school and adopting new textbooks and materials.
So can anybody attend those stakeholders' meetings?
Yes, they're open to the public. So the committee are the voting members of the committee, but they are public meetings, and that will also be posted on our website.
Anything from Governing Board? I'll just mention, especially since we have civics class here, it's time to think about registering to vote. I know you guys may be a little bit young, but talking to people in the community, we will have that time passed that you need to register to vote before the next meeting. So I just want to encourage everybody who wants to vote to register to vote. Do we have any other call to the publics? Board suggestions for future agenda items. Hearing none, any media clarifying questions? Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Kyle Niederman.
Yes.
Arciana Olliar.
Yes.
Mr. Ramon.
Yes.
John Mastin. John Vasden?
Yes.
Erica Rann?
Yes, we are adjourned.